I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. My plan, could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
Thank you. Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 24th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers. And we do have a couple of proclamations tonight to read. The first one being the National Telecommunicators Week of April 8 through 14. What, June what? Did I miss something?
Well, Carol and several of the dispatchers are going to be here this evening.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do the other one first?
Let's do the other one first to give them a little bit of time. I think they were doing shift change at 6 o'clock.
We can do that, not a problem. So we'll do equal pay day. Commissioner Chatterley has that.
Proclamation, equal pay day, April 10th, 2018. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act and Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay differentials. And whereas according to statistics released in 2016 by the U.S. Census Bureau year-round, full-time working women in 2015 earned only 80% of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to a January 2002 report released by the General Accounting Office, the investigative arm of Congress, women managers in seven of 10 industries surveyed actually lost ground in closing the wage gap between 1995 and 2000. And whereas according to an analysis of data and over 300 classifications provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics in 2001, women earn less in every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women such as cashiers, retail sales, registered nurses, and teachers. Whereas higher education is not free from wage discrimination according to a U.S. Department of Education analysis reporting that after controlling for rank, age, credentials, field of study, and other factors, full-time female faculty members earn nearly 9% less than their male counterparts. And whereas over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages, impacting Social Security benefits and pensions. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 10th symbolizes the time in 2018 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Therefore, do I, our mayor, James Neil Sagata of the city of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim April 10th, 2018, as equal pay day in Raton and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force and further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. In witness thereof, our mayor has set his hand and caused the official seal of the city of Raton, New Mexico, to be affixed this 10th day of April 2018. Signed, James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor.
Do we have a representative? I think, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Schuster, we have the National Telecommunicators Week.
And talk about a group of women who deserve equal pay.
Absolutely.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of emergency services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the city of Raton Dispatch Center. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the city of Raton telecommunications have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suspension of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, does James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor of the city of Raton, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Telecommunicators Week in the city of Raton in honor of our telecommunications whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. In witness whereof, he has hereunto set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the city of Raton to be affixed this 10th day of April 2018. Neil James, James Neil Sagata, Jr., Mayor.
Okay, item five, we have comments from the general public. This time, anyone wishing to address the commission may do so. Just ask you to step up to the podium, state your name, and your reason for being here.
I guess I'm the only one?
I guess so, Mr. Kayler.
I'm Ivan Kayler. My reason to be here is the code enforcement and the city manager. I went to the city manager on September 8th. Now, I know this is a long time ago, but there's some reason for that. And he was in Albuquerque to a meeting. That's fine. I came back on the 12th of September. He was attending here in Raton. Okay, I can see that. I saw him in the meeting room. On the 13th, I came in and the manager was not in his office at the time. She took my message that I wanted to talk to him, and she said she'd leave me my message. She took down my name, phone number, and whatever. I never did get a code call back from her until I came in on the 20th. At that time, on the 20th, she said, yes, just a moment, I'll go get him. He's in his office. She came right back and said, well, he is not in his office. I don't know where he is. It seems to me like she was ducking me all the time. And I understand that from the general public I've talked to, that's pretty much his standard. He never did say anything to me. When I left that message that last time, I said, you can leave a message to tell him that I am not going to go away. And I hadn't any more and got down to about First National Bank, and I had a phone call from him. And it was a nine-minute phone call, and him chewed my rear out for being rude to his office personnel. And I asked him, what was I rude about? Well, I don't know. She just said he was rude. Well, anyway, he said that twice to me. We talked about the code outfit, and he said, listen, they've got fire calls, they've got ambulance calls, they've got training, and I don't know what all else. Well, if they're wearing that many hats, we need a different code enforcement. We need a separate code enforcement like we used to have. I cannot see why Raton has to be so, I don't know, chintzy or dirty or whatever. We are a dirty city. You can go down about any alley, and there's enough alleys to go down that it'd take a code enforcement, probably a year or two, to get it all straightened out. So, anyway, he chewed my rear out, and then he asked me what portions. I told him there were seven portions. Well, two of them finally got mowed. The grass on there has not, or the weeds has not been mowed for two, it was prior, it was two years ago last September, they haven't been mowed. Now, one of the people mowed theirs every year. It was in between two other lots. Well, they quit mowing. They said, well, heck, these guys don't have to mow. Why should I put out the money? I think what's happened is that when we had an individual code enforcement, that they, I hear all the time, well, the city don't have their, cut their grass or weeds. Why should I pay for it? I think that's what's happened so far, is that people have gone to the city that got, now, I'm just thinking, I have no positive proof that's what happened, but my own thinking is they'd go to the city manager and say, hey, why should I pay this bit if the city's not going to do it? I think he got tired of being bombarded with people. So, my feeling is that I do not like, and I have never been chewed out that bad in my entire life. I was 79 years old at the time, and I've been chewed out a lot of times, but not ever like what he did. I think he owes me an apology because that is not being professional at all. He should have his own temper under control. So, that's what I wanted to go on. Thank you.
Mr. Kayler? Mr. Kayler?
Ivan.
Ivan? What, that was several months ago. Is there a reason it took you this long to come to us?
Well, okay, right off the bat, I thought, well, his young whippersnapper's still wet behind the ears. I'll just let him by with it. And the more I got to thinking about it, and the more I thought, well, you know, I helped pay his dang salary through my taxes.
So there hasn't been another incident of anything? You just, it's just been eating at you, huh?
Pardon?
I said, there hasn't been a separate, an additional incident of anything? It's just been eating at you?
It's been eating at me, and I had talked to a city commissioner on 11/30 last year, and he, because I thought, well, we could iron this out. And if he would have made a phone call back, we could have ironed it out on that phone call.
Okay.
The city commissioner said, well, I am, I'll check into it, but it will be some time before. Okay, it was November 30th. I can see, hey, Christmas is coming up, there's only a couple weeks and such, more meetings and such, so I let a slide.
Okay.
And then, it was in early, early February. I don't date that, but I made a call to that commissioner, and he wouldn't take my call. Since then, I went to another commissioner about the 20th of March and told him what the scoop was. And he said, well, in fact, I told you, I said, let's wait till after the election, let that all go with, which is March.
Right.
Well, it was February, about the 20th of February that I talked to you.
Okay.
So, it just kept eating at me.
Fair enough.
That somebody can get by with telling the public, go jump in the lake.
Okay. Well, thank you for expressing your concerns. Thank you.
So, like I said, I do expect infidelity from the city manager for his unprofessional attitude.
Moving on to item six, action items. Item A, approval of the March 27th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes. They were provided in your pocket. You had time to consider them.
I found nothing, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as they are. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, deliberate and act on appointment of city commissioner liaison to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Fellow commissioners, yesterday I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Barry and Commissioner Chatterley. Sorry, went blank there. And we discussed this, and Commissioner Chatterley brought up some questions that I've asked myself in the past, but have never sought an answer to, for lack of a better word, and have just figured, well, that's the way it's always been done. But a lot of times when we sit up here and we go through these committee reports, a lot of times the answer is no report. And that's due to the fact that a lot of these committees don't meet that often, especially, I'm on the Extraterritorial Zoning Authority Commission, or Committee. The last time that met was 2012, when I was mayor the last time. So, what we would propose before possibly taking action on this position is, I would like to propose, and we've met with Commissioner Schuster today, she had some of the same questions, and that came up. Commissioner Chatterley got us thinking here, that we sit down as a group perhaps and discuss about what committees are pertinent to have the information for, which committees are still active, and that, and go from that direction. I believe it's very important that we still hear from the Raton Public Service, Raton Water Works, the housing, the library meets consistently. But these other committees are just sometimes hit and miss. So, I would, I guess, would entertain postponing action on this appointment as a commission to the liaison until we have a chance to perhaps sit down and discuss what committees actually are still meeting and have a regular report with. And Mr. Barry, I'd welcome any comments you might have.
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioner, I think that the format that you see that we followed now recently is, is a format that maybe was adopted in recent years. But the purpose of these reports is really to bring information to the commission. So you appoint a liaison to cover a particular board of commission, because we have a lot of things going outside of, you know, the business meeting that we have here, and really just to bring information that's important to you back. And so, for example, on the utility boards, both of those are very active right now. There are a lot of issues to discuss. You know, all of you are not going to be in attendance to those, but it's to get that information to the full commission, also to the public. So that can be in any format that the commission would decide on. Now, I use for an example, we generally list planning and zoning, extraterritorial planning and zoning. And because there has not been a lot of development, subdivision work, or things that pertain to that, planning and zoning has adopted a schedule of meeting once every three months. Extraterritorial actually has not met in more than a year, and you remember at the last meeting, we took action to appoint city representatives so that we could get a business meeting going again. So, it's pretty rare that that board would meet. So we can make those adjustments to the agenda and really format this in the way that the commission would like to receive that information. In addition, you know, city staff typically covers a lot of meetings as well, and there could be a time when you'd like to hear from a city staffer, and I know we've done that with utility boards from time to time. So, that's an option for you too. As far as how we list that on the agenda, I think you go back years ago, and the item on the agenda simply said committee reports from commissioners, and the clerk would go around the table and call on individual commissioners to report things that you would want to bring to the commission. So, certainly we'll list that on the agenda for the next meeting and take the input of the commission, and you can format that how it is most effective for you at the current time.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Yeah, I had several members of the public ask me why we have the no-report thing going on all the time, because they don't see, you know, what's actually going on. So I think it would better reflect what we're doing to revamp that a little bit.
We have boards that some of us sit on, such as the chamber board that we don't report on, as well as, you know, Mayor Sagata has actually been going to, often going to the Lodger's Tax, and so it's not formally reported that he's been there. So, I think we kind of have to rethink how we're reporting.
Yeah, I think it would be a better reflection of what we're doing, and actually, you know, we all know what committees we're on and what business we have to bring to the table. But when it's not listed there, it may sound like, well, they're not meeting. But in fact, we are meeting with these boards. It's just some of them don't meet anymore.
Or don't meet often.
Or don't meet often, yes.
Well, I was on the airport board, and that deleted that one. If you remember about six months ago, we deleted that one. So, but I think that, I think that we could discuss it at the next meeting and correct whatever we need to.
Sounds like a plan. So I would entertain a motion to postpone, item B.
I'll move to postpone deliberation and action on appointment of city commission liaison to Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
All second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone item B, the appointment of a city commission to the liaison to the Lodger's Tax Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, public hearing fiscal year 2019 city of Raton budget. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I'll make some broad-brush statements about the budget and the budget process, and then we do have a public hearing set up, and of course, we would like to receive the input of the public. And as always, we would note that an interested citizen or party can appear before the commission meeting, not only at this meeting, but we'll talk about this in future meetings. They could submit their thoughts in writing. We could get that through regular mail, email, or phone call. However, the public would like to comment on the budget process. But we are kicking off the discussion of the 2019 budget here tonight, and then we have a lot of work to do as we go forward. After I make my comments, I'm going to defer to Michael Ann to talk about the schedule. And as you know, we have a responsibility to report to Department of Finance Administration of the state of New Mexico at various stages in the budget process. So, I'll go ahead with comments here, and this would be for a budget that would go into effect on July 1st, 2018, and then run through the last day of June of 2019. So, we have a few months left in the current budget year, and we can talk about how we're doing on that. So, as far as grocery receipts tax, and that really is one of the biggest components to the revenue side of our budget, we had budgeted for a decline in that from the previous year, and I think it's tracked pretty well with the projections. And those projections were based on significant lower volume of construction. Specifically, in the previous year, there was construction on the South Interchange and a lot of construction on the Colfax County Jail that did contribute to the higher collection in that year. And South Interchange was done, a lot of the work was done on the jail, and so we had really decreased that revenue projection in the current year, and it's tracked pretty well. We're about 3% above what we had projected, but still well below the previous year. So that's GRT. As we have told the commission, one revenue component that's fairly important to us is the receipt of small cities assistance. That is a distribution from the state to cities, I believe, under 10,000 population that originates from the, some taxes that they would receive that would not enter into our normal local taxes. And that was significantly lower than what we had projected, and it's really tough to predict that. It's, we really don't have an indication of how that's going to go until that's sent to us after the legislature adjourns. And we did find that we had a $70,000 decrease from the previous year and from what we had budgeted. We'll cover that with a decrease, a corresponding decrease in expenses, and we'll ride that through. But $70,000 of missing revenue is tough to make up for this late in the budget year. So, our option would be to go to reserves or try to reduce expenses, and I think we have found a couple of ways to reduce those expenses. But looking ahead, next year, at that component, it's hard to predict. And so, we've talked to municipal league, they think that the, that particular revenue source may stabilize and come back to historic levels, but we have to make a decision on how to budget for that. So, the expense side is fairly straightforward. We want to provide an equivalent level of service to what we've been doing. We want to, a lot of our expense side is personnel costs, and we want to maintain a lot of the personnel that we have and the corresponding expense that goes with that. We'll talk about a couple of expense things, but really looking at the revenue projection is what we're interested in right now. So, we look around town, and we see what's happening in town, and we see some commercial development in town that will be coming online during the next budget year or the end of this budget year. But the closing of the Kmart store, that's a pretty significant concern. What the impact of the closing of the Kmart store will be on our upcoming budget, that's difficult to predict. So, we could take the volume of business from Kmart and project that we're going to lose all of the corresponding GRT with that, but that's probably not accurate. Some other businesses in town are going to be able to cover some of those demands for products. So, it's probably going to be a decrease from what we see now, but I don't think it's going to be 100% decrease all out. I think we'll see some of that business spread around town to other businesses. So we'll have to talk about that some more and decide how to factor that into the budget. Now, on the expense side, I would just say that a couple of things that we know right now, we'll see our property insurance go up by 5%. And so that's insurance that we pool with the New Mexico Self Insurance Fund through the municipal league. There have been, actually... There have been actually a higher level in the 5% of losses, but they are passing along a 5% increase to us. So that would cover buildings, equipment, really all property losses that the city might have. Most municipalities do get property insurance through that route. And in addition, we'll see, we're projecting that health insurance for our employees will go up by about 4%. We don't have a good number on that yet, but the information that we have is that we'll see that kind of increase on health insurance. Both of those numbers are fairly significant expense increases that we'll see in the upcoming budget. So we'll factor that in. We would anticipate getting something of a draft to you and start talking about this in some more depth as we go along. But I would like to call on the treasurer clerk to talk about our schedule at this point and what we are required to do. And I would just simply point out that Rattone Public Service Company and Rattone Waterworks, they're following a parallel process as well and working on their budget. And they'll talk about those things that are important to them. They'll also share in, in some of those insurance increases as well. And I'll hold up there, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor and commission, I've provided you with a calendar that I've prepared. And as the city manager stated, we have a process and certain deadlines that we have to meet. And so a pretty tight time schedule. The interim budget will be due by June 1st. And so in order to meet that deadline, you'll see that starting now at this meeting, we'll start to gather information from the public and also the commission. And that input will help us as we prepare our draft. And so we've given the department heads their budget worksheets and they're currently working on those. And so we have a plan to meet with department heads on May 1st and we'll have individual meetings with them to review kind of the draft and also the realistic projections that we've come up with, as the city manager said, for our revenues and the expenses based on our department needs. So by doing that, that gives me enough time to prepare the draft and have a really good draft to you by the May 8th meeting. At the April 24th meeting, we'll continue to gather additional information and we'll also probably have another budget hearing if anybody from the public would like to attend. As the city manager said, they can also phone in or email us, any, anything that they would like us to consider. Also at the, tonight's meeting, we'll be talking about our audit contract. You'll see there's a deadline on there of May 15th that I'll need to get that submitted and get a contract in place for this fiscal year 18 audit. And then I hope for us to review and adopt the interim budget at the May 22nd meeting, which is our regular second meeting in May. And then I'll have until June 1st to submit to DFA. Now this year, we're doing things a little bit different. I did attend training last week in Santa Fe. They've been implementing a new budget module, and it's not just for budget, but it's also going to be for quarterly reporting and budget adjustments. And so it's more of a database and web-based module that all entities will use. And it's starting with the June 1st interim budget. So we hope to have that implemented and in place as well going into this next fiscal year. And then other than, as the city manager said, we do have other reporting deadlines, such as our quarterly report, third quarter report, we do April 30th. And then going into June, after we've submitted our interim budget, we can certainly schedule some additional budget workshops in June and July if needed before we give the final approval on the budget July 24th. And so when we do the final budget, we have to determine our ending June 30 cash balances. And so then we'll make final adjustments based on that June 30, those ending cash balances. And that'll give us a more accurate picture of kind of how we ended the fiscal year. So other than that, and then moving into August, you know, that's when we prepare for our auditors to come and we'll start doing some site test work with them. And September, you'll be adopting an ICIP. So I just kind of tried to put some of those, those dates on there so you can kind of see what we can anticipate in the coming months.
Mayor, I'll just wrap up the comments by reviewing a couple of things that we talked about at the last meeting. The cash reserves of the city are in fairly strong position. We have, of course, continually kind of built up our general fund cash reserve over the last several years and we're in a fairly strong position. As far as employees go, representing employees, we have three out of the four collective bargaining agreements are, are done. We still have one component that is in the process of collective bargaining. So we're not at a place that we can report to the commission on that. As we go through the schedule, we anticipate getting that component completed and bringing that to the commission as well. And of course, that will factor into the budget. And so we'll talk about all of those things as we go along. I would say that for a commissioner, if you have a specific item to talk about in regard to this upcoming budget, we can certainly, you know, go enter into a discussion of that here. But I think like anyone else, if you would like to make those comments to the clerk, we can, we can receive those comments that way as well. But it's the beginning of, of the process and it's a fairly important budgeting process this year, I would say, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments for Mr. Berry or Michael Ann?
Not here.
Is there any comments from out there regarding the budget process? Okay, seeing none, I would move on to item number D. Deliberate an act on introduction of ordinance authorizing the issuance of joint utility system improvement revenue bonds, series 2018, in the principal amount of $1,754,000 for the filter plant project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and commission, we have a process that we are starting also on this item that is related to the financing of water system improvements that were authorized by the voters during the March election. We said at that time that we would like to get a pretty quick start on that process of upgrading our water system and report back to the commission and the public. And I have worked with Dan Campbell as far as initiating that process. And recently, I attended a meeting with Mr. Campbell and actually over several meetings and several different sets of engineers where we talked about the status of improvements to the water treatment plant. So Mr. Campbell is here to talk about those tonight. And the document that you have in your packet is specific to that project, improvements at the water treatment plant. We've also talked about proposed improvements to Lake Maloya Dam, improvements to the distribution system, and beginning a process of putting together proposed scope of work and cost estimates for improvement to the Cimarron system, where we divert water from the Cimarron River on Eagle last night and bring it into our filter plant. That system generally consists of about 40 miles of pipeline, a pre-treatment facility, and three booster pump stations, as well as controls and telecommunications on that. So that's a complicated system. We'll be working on that for a while and we initiated that process this week. So if I could, Mayor, I'd like to call on Mr. Campbell to come forward and address the commission as far as the document that you have in your packet.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Office of Treasurer. This, this item you have on here, what I'd actually ask at this time, I'll give an explanation of the table, the timing on it, is probably at this point to table this because we are awaiting final documents from USDA Rural Developments Office of General Counsel. Those were not received as of 5 o'clock today. Watch it as they're trying to do this. They have to review these. We will go through a process of similar to what was done in 2004 sewer plant projects. This will actually be specific to the water treatment plant. And what we actually applied for about one year ago, almost this month, is you're looking at, what's in this document is $1,754,000 that's in a loan portion, 32%, actually, that goes along with that, the equivalent of the two and a half million dollar project is $829,000 in grant funds. What was, what will be before this commission, as we go, there'll be a bonding order, so there'll be an introduction at this point, not having the completed documents. We would need to table this until those are in place to where they can be published as the actual documents. But at the same time, there will be a loan grant resolution. One of each on there that will go before this commission. And there will also be an interim financing for during construction that will be before this. We will also have Daniel Alsop, which is the bonding attorney, address this. I think it was Mr. Strummer before, which is over a decade ago, but this is actually the current bonding attorney on the bidding process. They got it, they would actually address this board on some of these questions. But this would be a bonding effort to fund this on a loan program at 2%. And then we would actually get their match. And this is actually USDA Rural Development funding, so it is a 40-year increment. But what we would actually do is be committing, and when they say both utilities, they're talking water and wastewater, we're committing any revenue, which would include three-quarter percent receipts tax that we recently passed, any of our rate structures that we would pay this. The goal we've got with this in mind, if we've got to find this, we actually have the wastewater treatment bonds that we're actually paying on. And at the end of this year, the goal we've had as a utility board is that we would actually have this funding, but everything else, including, which is why we did the 3/4% gross receipts tax, would expire at the end of this year and we wouldn't have any other debts except these two USDA debts. To our Water Trust Board loans, everything has got a goal of wrapping that all, all up in this fiscal year. So at this point, I guess what I'd actually do is until we come back from their Office of General Counsel approval, and I do not know how fast that's doing, we're in, in the queue trying to wait for our turn to do this. Because the goal we have is to try to move forward and actually be bidding that this summer to where, you know, we actually get started hopefully in the fall to do a project on the water treatment plant. The crucial, most crucial part we've got to do is to maintain water production. It is going to be a fall, winter, spring project when we're at our lower flow rates because it's going to involve some shutdown time and everything else where we're operating off our tanks. So scheduling is critical on that. And that would be our goal. We've also got the first draft of the drawings are in front of the Mexico Environment Department and we're anticipating May approval on those documents. All of this has to go into place to hopefully look at a timeline of June, July, somewhere in there, to go out to bid. All of this has to be in place. We are looking at, dealing with Michael Ann, we've got probably a six-week process here to do the introduction of the two public hearings before we go to that point. So knowing that all of this goes through that same process and then actually a bid, hopefully an award and a final closing on all these documentations. So the federal paperwork process is quite lengthy as we go through, but at the same time, it does come with an $800,000 grant component. And that's all I have. I guess I would request whether we table that at this point.
All righty, we have a recommendation from Mr. Campbell and Mr. Berry to table this. Adam, I would take a motion.
I want to suggest that we postpone it rather than table it, which is just a technicality in terms.
I'll second.
Okay.
So we have a motion to postpone from Mayor Protim Schuster and a second from Commissioner Jacomo. Is there any other discussion?
I would like to see if at some time before we get all this started, that if you could give us the commissioners that are interested, a tour of the facility and what the work's going to be done. And I think, I think you and I discussed that a little bit before and I said that I think that would be a, a deal, including the water board, to see exactly what we're doing.
And that'd be, that would be, would be a good trip to do. We could actually see what we would need to do as, as far as having a meeting type announcement if we were to do that, if we were to have together.
Sure. We could do a notice of potential for.
Right. Go up there and, and actually could schedule that. At the same time, we would also have some drawings and kind of go through what's going to be accomplished.
That'd be great.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other discussion? Hey, Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. We will postpone.
Thank you.
Item E, deliberate an act on audit firm recommendation for fiscal year 18 audit. Mr. Berry, Michael Ann?
Mayor and commission, I will have Michael Ann talk about, not some bolts of this, but just make, again, some general comments. And from the information that you have in the package, you can see that we have a memorandum from the state auditor. We do have a new state auditor currently, Wayne Johnson, that change has taken place recently and quite a bit of the staff of the state auditor has changed over also. And of course, they control much of the process with the audit that occurs of each municipality and each public agency. And it's a lengthy process that really takes most of the year. So as far as the upcoming process, it would begin now. You see the memorandum that authorizes us to begin contracting with an IPA or independent audit firm. And you see the requirements that we submit that for approval to the state auditor and then from that point on, they'll pretty well approve of every step that we take on that as far as how we pay the auditor, what's in that agreement with them. And it's done on an annual basis. So you see a proposal from the firm. They have changed their name several times in our dealings with them and currently it is Carr, Riggs, and Ingram CPA and advisors. And they have a cost proposal here for you to perform the, the current year audit. So I'm going to let Michael Ann Antinucci talk about the details of the proposal, answer any questions that you have as far as reporting this to the state auditor. But you can see from the memo that auditors have to be approved by them and some that may have had that approval in the past may not currently have that because of things that, that may have happened. So we'd have to run that by the auditor. But, Michael Ann?
So as you can see, Mayor and commission, the memo I've provided to you in your packet, as the city manager stated, our firm has changed names several times over the years. But despite their merger with other companies, we're technically, have completed the fourth, fourth year with this firm, even though they've been three different names. So in the audit rule, we're eligible to use the same auditor for six consecutive years. So we'd still be eligible to use the same firm for two more years. So the procurement regulations, when a contract is under 60,000, we're not required to go out for RFP. Now, we did go out for RFP probably three years ago. And then two, two years ago, I think we just had them, we solicited proposals. And so last year, our proposed expense from this firm did not include a single audit. Now this year, we will because of the federal expenditures on the airport and several other federal funding sources that we have, we're going to exceed that 750,000 in federal expenditures. So there's going to be an additional component to this year's audit. And so the pricing that they've quoted me for this year includes that revision and that additional single audit component, which is about an additional 50 hours. And then there's also some changes in the audit rule with respect to retiree health and the calculation of those liabilities. So there'll be some additional test work that we're told for this next fiscal year based on that. So they're just slightly under 60,000, otherwise we would have to go out to RFP. So, but like I said, that is because of the single audit requirements. And so I think, you know, the last few years, they've, they've done a good job and we have a pretty good working relationship with them. They've developed a familiarity with the city. So it's always difficult when you change firms because it's kind of like starting from scratch for them to come in brand new and not have that familiarity with our accounting systems and just our policies and procedures. So I am recommending that we continue, at least for another year, with this firm. And so in order to do so, with your approval this evening, that would then give me authorization to initiate the contract process with the state auditor's office. And that's all online. And then, once we get an official signed contract back, then we could start scheduling those dates to do some onsite test work. Now, last year, they were able to come a couple days in June, and then they completed our audit in a week in October. So the sooner we can start the test work and get them in here, really ensures that, for one, we're going to have a timely audit, and we can meet that December fifteenth deadline. So the sooner we can get them in here, the better.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Michael Land?
I make a motion to approve the firm recommendation for FY eighteen audit.
We have a motion and a second to approve the firm recommendation of, they are now Carr, Riggs, and Ingram, for the fiscal year eighteen audit. Any further discussion? Michael Land, could we add a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Barry, thank you. Item F, deliberate an act on Gordon Environmental Proposal for 2018 Environmental Monitoring Reporting Services. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I am going to call on Jason Phillips to come forward from Public Works Department and talk about some details and answer any questions you have on the cost proposal. Let me just say that this is the cost proposal from Gordon PSC for the monitoring of existing groundwater monitoring wells at the municipal landfill. Municipal landfill was closed, I believe, in 2013, and we have since gone through a closure certification with New Mexico Environment Department. When you have that certification of closure, which we do have, the rule is that you would begin a thirty-year period of responsibility and monitoring of the landfill. So we are into that thirty-year period now, and that generally would consist of performing any maintenance on the site that might be required, like repair of erosion or ensuring that vegetated cover is maintained on the site. It also includes the monitoring of groundwater, and as we said, we monitor three groundwater wells, and in addition, monitoring for methane gas. And so this would be that one component, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Phillips.
Mayor, Commissioner, as you should have in your packet, we have a proposal from Gordon Environmental PSC. Since their last contract, Gordon Environmental has merged with Park Hill Smith and Cooper, hence the new name. In relation to last year's fees, the 2017 proposal from Gordon was twenty-three thousand nine hundred. This year's proposed fee is twenty-five thousand four hundred, which according to their proposal accounts for partially an increase in the mandatory lab fees that are a third-party service to them. I would at this time recommend approval of this. Kind of our history with Gordon Environmental is they've done a lot of work towards the closure of the landfill. They successfully awarded a number of RFPs for sanitation-related services. This is a standalone proposal under the sixty thousand. We do not currently have a contract through a qualifications-based proposal for anyone to do solid waste services. It's a twice-a-year process that there are some pretty strict penalties for missing, so time is relevant here. It's not necessarily of the essence this evening if you chose to not award it. In a situation like this, much like Michael Land spoke on the audit, there's a background of data and familiarity with the process that last year's firm has for this year. So for another firm to get up to speed would be a little difficult. I would recommend going forward, at some point, we do a full-blown RFP for sanitation-related services, so we have somewhere on contract. And honestly, I would like to see this cost go down, but in the current regulatory environment and the litigation that we're in, I just don't think now's a good time to change engineers in this process. So with all things being considered, I would recommend an award to Gordon PSC for the twenty-five thousand four hundred for these specific services, and be happy to stand for any questions if you have any.
Jason, going forward, if we were to change firms, is the data proprietary to them, or do we own the data?
We own the data, and not only do we own it, it's a historical record. It's part of the public record at the Environment Department. And what a new firm would do is basically look at that historical data. And what they're doing is kind of getting a snapshot of time of the landfill, as constituents could travel through it, they're monitoring up gradient versus lower gradient, and seeing if the landfill's impacting groundwater. I point out, this groundwater is pretty poor quality on the up gradient side. It's not really showing an impact from our landfill down gradient. But it is something that a new firm, and there's, right now, we're a biannual, and there's, I'll tell you more about a wash than you want to know about a wash, but they have a list of contaminants called a constituent list that you try to reduce as you go forward, and there's things that after four cycles have been non-detect. You try to limit those parameters, and by doing that, you reduce your lab costs. It doesn't really reduce your reporting costs or your sampling costs, but the laboratory costs drop. And eventually, if you're successful for a decade, you go to once-a-year monitoring, and your proposal goes from twenty-five thousand to twelve. And over the thirty-year life of this thing, you hope to shave off tens of thousands of dollars by reducing the parameter list. So as we go forward, we'll definitely try to save every dollar we can in this. You know, it's not a loyalty issue, it's just a timing issue. We're so new to the culture that we need to develop some good data before we propose to ED to reduce some constituents, but...
I understand, thank you.
And Mayor, I would also add to that, that there are a number of firms, if we have a competitive process down the road, there would be a number of environmental firms that are qualified to do this type of work. But really, I think all of those firms will ultimately use the same lab as a third-party. So we'll see consistency with the use of the lab, so that while maybe a different person is doing sampling and preparing the report, the lab work is consistent, a very specialized service. We use that same lab for our wastewater treatment plant and monitoring groundwater there, and that would be consistent.
Ready. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Phillips?
How many years do we have to monitor that?
Our monitoring window is thirty years from the date of the accepted closure. After our retroactive completion of final cover, I believe they started that clock ticking at a certain date in 2016. And another function of that is we're accruing financial assurance every month towards an estimated closure thirty-year monitoring window of one-point-two million dollars. As you get years in and as you remove tasks from that list, that number should drop as well.
There you go.
Ready.
I'll move to approve the proposal from Environmental Monitoring. I'm sorry, I lost.
That's all right. We got a motion and a second to approve the proposal from Gordon Environmental PSC for the Environmental Monitoring and Reporting Services. Is there any further discussion?
Is Giacomo the second?
Yes, Commissioner Giacomo was the second. And no other discussion? Michael Land, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Thank you, JP.
Thank you. Item H, deliberate an act on aviation grant agreement RTN-18-02 for aircraft hangar construction. Mr. Barry? Did I miss G? I scratched it off early, I sure did. Well, we'll back up. Item G, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-22, authorizing and approving financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for transfer station project financing. Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, we have two sources of funding. We actually have three sources of funding for construction of the convenience center or the transfer station. If you remember, the proposal is to transfer solid waste in an indoor facility where we have less wind-blown litter and a nicer environment for employees, and also consolidate our recycling operations and make for a more efficient operation. So we are sitting at about ninety percent design of the facility, and we have purchased the building package. So the building is actually here. We're waiting on some other components to be delivered, the doors specifically for this. But the three sources of funding are, number one, a loan from the New Mexico Finance Authority. That loan document dates back to 2012. In addition, we have grant funding from the New Mexico Environment Department, actually a combination of grant and loan. And then we have enterprise funds, which would be funded by the rates that are collected locally here. So those would be the three sources of funding. However, on the New Mexico Finance Authority loan, which is the bulk of the remaining funding, we do have an issue with that five-year time period since the loan was finalized by the commission at that time. So five years is a limit for New Mexico Finance Authority. They have sold bonds in order to loan us the money, and so that creates some tax consequences on their side. So what they have advised us is we would be required, or the recommendation is that we close out that 2012 loan and initiate a new loan for that funding on the transfer station. So we're starting that process here with the attached resolution, and what you would be approving there is authorizing the application process to go to New Mexico Finance Authority. And Michael Land, I don't know if you have any additional comments, something I may have overlooked in that presentation, but we can answer any questions.
No, I think the action this evening, by passing the resolution, as the city manager stated, gives us the authorization to prepare a loan application. Their Board of Finance generally meets only once a month, and so of course, we would want to proceed in order to meet the timeline for construction of the building. Once a loan is approved, I mean, we're looking at probably a three-month process here. We would have to bring back the actual loan documents to the commission and pass probably another resolution, and probably be looking at a loan closing date of probably early July before funds would be available under a new loan. So there is a quite extensive process involved. But if we were able to get a loan application in this month, it would go to their Board of Finance meeting in May, like May 24th, I believe, is what I was told. So we'd be looking at June sometime, once their bond council could prepare actual loan documents for consideration.
Well, I think we need to move on it, so I'll move to approve Resolution 2018-22, authorizing and approving financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for transfer station project financing.
I'll sign.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2018-22. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes, thank you. And now we can move on to item H, deliberate an act on aviation agreement, grant agreement RTN-18-02 for the aircraft hangar construction.
Mr. Barry?
Mayor, Commissioner, I have had some discussions with State Aviation in regard to the proposed construction of an aircraft hangar, and that resulted from discussions with DOS Aviation, who has stated that they would expect increased activity at the Ratone Flight School. Currently, we see a number of basically locally-based students that are pursuing this training at the flight school. But we would look at, in future years, that really coming up to clients of DOS that would be more in line with the military-style training that DOS has offered at the Pueblo facility, and that would mean additional aircraft based at the Ratone facility. So far, aircraft have gone back and forth between Ratone and Pueblo. DOS has rented a hangar, an existing hangar, at the airport, but we're getting to the point where, due to additional operations and additional aircraft, we would decide how to hangar those aircraft. So we have talked about construction of the hangar and then executing a lease agreement with DOS for that hangar. State Aviation has stated to me that they would be willing to fund half of the estimated cost of half a million dollars to build a ten-thousand-square-foot hangar that would be constructed in the vicinity of the flight school. And then as activities pick up, we may look at an additional hangar or additional hangars. So I would represent to the commission that we have the proposed grant agreement in hand for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for construction of the ten-thousand-square-foot hangar facility that would be constructed on City of Ratone property and be owned and maintained by the City of Ratone, funded through a lease agreement with DOS. And then we would also bring a solution for financing the remaining two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to the city commission, and as a part of the budget process that we talked about, to be effective on July first. And then we would hope to have the lease agreement coincide with that, and after the first of the fiscal year, begin construction of the hangar facility.
Is there any questions for Mr. Barry?
Are we able to, how timely is this with the state? Are we able to wait until we have a lease agreement to approve this, or what's that process?
We are. We, the state had just said, and sent us by email and said, if you could get us a response back to it, back to State Aviation, they are looking for our response. Commissioner, I would say that if you, if you want to take more time to evaluate this, that would be fine. We can, we can talk about the grant agreement at a future meeting. If you would care to act on it in a favorable, with a favorable vote, I don't see an obligation until these other components come to the commission. We would have this out of the way, but I don't think there would really be an obligation to you until we talk about those other pieces.
Is there, I know you were out today, so you haven't had a chance to talk with DOS about what type of lease agreement and term length?
We, we need to have a discussion on the terms of that. Mayor, I would anticipate a five-year lease agreement, and it would be at the fair market value. We would establish fair market value for the hangar. I would anticipate a similar deal on the flight school going forward.
Who is responsible for, who does the building?
This would be a typical sealed bid project in construction by a qualified contractor. I would anticipate that our airport engineer would provide professional design services on the project. And for a hangar, it's a fairly straightforward type of construction, reinforced concrete foundation, floor, steel, pre-engineered steel building, similar to what we're talking about with the transfer station, really a simpler design. I think the caveat here is the door assembly, which is specific to the type of aircraft that will be used. Now, I would state that if the commission, if we proceed with building a hangar, State Aviation and Federal Aviation both really have a say-so in how the hangar is used. And we would be committing to use the hangar for aviation purposes, basically. I think that going forward in the future, we would be restricted from some other use of the hangar. It really would be specific for aviation purposes. It really would be specific for aviation purposes.
Any other comments? Would entertain a motion of some type?
Motion to approve the grant agreement RTN-18-2 for aircraft hangar construction.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the aviation grant agreement RTN-18-02. Any further discussion? Michael An, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Thank you. Item I, deliberate enact on deed of easement between the City of Ratone and Amtrak. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could talk about item I and item J at the same time, I'll bring the commission up to date on those two items. We did list these on the agenda. I is a deed of easement between City of Ratone and Amtrak. J is a Ratone Station lease agreement between City of Ratone and Amtrak. And in combination, those two documents would state that if the City of Ratone had ownership of the Ratone Depot, which would be necessary before these agreements were executed and went into effect, that we would dedicate that facility to rail passenger use or rail use in general, but that Amtrak would really have unfettered use of the facilities for rail passenger use. And in addition, it says that the City of Ratone would own and operate the facility, and Amtrak really won't help you pay any of the bills that go with operation maintenance or subsequent construction to that. So that's the agreement that we're looking at simply. Now, I would pass along to the commission, we had talked about this before, that we would have to finalize the agreements with BNSF as far as transfer of the facility from BNSF ownership to City of Ratone, and they had asked for additional time for consideration of that. And so in some messages back and forth earlier today and previous in the week, they are not ready to make the final call on that. They did say they thought they would greenlight the project, and they were working on that, and they were gathering information and doing their due diligence. And really, their consideration comes down to this. BNSF looks at this as donating an asset to the City of Ratone. I think we look at this as a responsibility to maintain and operate an iconic building in Ratone and to dedicate that to rail passenger use, and we would like to see a world-class facility when people get on the train or off the train in Ratone, and we're a long way from that now. So that responsibility has not been met, and I think that our interest in looking at the building would be to improve the depot, to preserve the depot, to restore it to, I think, some of its original condition and enhance that experience for rail travelers. So we don't really look at it as accepting a donation of an asset, we look at it as taking on a pretty significant liability, and it would be a liability for a long time, perpetuity, basically. So that's really the discussion going on back and forth with BNSF. The urgency here would be the Federal Highway Administration grant funds that we have in hand. Those grant funds have been in place for a while. Federal Highway Administration has expressed that they would work with us on this project or an alternate project, but they would like to close those grant funds out and see the grant funds put to use. So I have made that representation to BNSF. I know there's been discussion between BNSF and Federal Highway Administration, that was part of their due diligence, and I would anticipate that by the next City Commission meeting, we will have a response from BNSF that the City Commission can act upon. So I would recommend that we postpone action on items I and J, and we do anticipate having it back on the agenda for our next regular meeting.
Alrighty, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry? Would entertain a motion to postpone these items?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Item K, deliberate enact on resolution 2018-23, fiscal year 18, budget adjustment number 12. Michael An?
Mayor, Commissioner, in your packet this evening is a budget adjustment. As you will see, the first part there is an adjustment, and it relates to our COPSS grant, the SRO, school resource funding that we received from the Department of Justice. During our second quarter review, DFA had asked that I do an adjustment to the transfers. So this is a temporary transfer, so it's an in and an out from the general fund to the COPSS grant. And then once we had started, we just got our first reimbursement for that grant just a couple weeks ago, actually. So my intent is, I did the first reimbursement from October through February, and then now I'll do one a month until the end of the fiscal year, and that's to reimburse us for the police officer's salary and benefits. And so I'm pleased that we actually have everything set up with DOJ, and it's working fine, so it'll be easy moving forward to do those reimbursement requests. But these funds are just, like many of our other grant funds, we do the transfers just while these reimbursements are pending, which this one, actually, the turnaround was less than five days, so. And then before the end of the fiscal year, we'll make sure that we reimburse the general fund for any of these temporary transfers. Now, the other item that had come up, my financial analyst and I were working on our second quarter report, somehow during the approval of our budget back in July, August, we submit our INCODE system-generated accounting budget, and that's in our format, and then I have to put everything into the Department of Finance format and submit those forms. So somewhere along the line, the COPSS grant, we approved it as a commission in July because we had to approve the matching funds because the school was unable to provide the matching funds. So that was one of the changes we made on our final budget, was to include the matching funds and the grant for this SRO. But somewhere, I got the match in the final budget documents, but I did not budget $27,682 as a revenue and an expense in DFA's forms. And so we discovered this during the second quarter review. So you'll see on this budget adjustment, it's not to adjust anything that's in our INCODE system because that was approved and uploaded with our budget, but in order, the DFA-approved budget is the final approved budget. So in order for me to correct that and adjust it, I'm just requesting an adjustment to do that, and then our system budget and DFA's budget will match. So apologize for that error, but it's an easy fix.
Alrighty, thank you. Any questions for Michael An?
Motion to approve resolution 2018-23, budget adjustment 12.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-23, budget adjustment number 12 for fiscal year 18. Any additional comments? Michael An, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
And Mayor Sagata?
Yes, thank you. Item L, city manager's report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I'll start by some activities of our city departments, and I'll begin with the discussion of the fire department. The fire department has responded to several fire events that have occurred recently, primarily fire that has occurred in grass areas, human-caused events. Our crew is available and anticipated these events and has responded to those. And I would just point out to everyone that might be following along that we are in a very dry period. We would expect the dry period to continue for maybe up to several months. It could be that we go through May and June and don't see a lot of precipitation. We're getting a lot of the wind now, and what precipitation you have, the wind will really remove that. So I think we really need to be cautious for about the next 90 days as far as these fire conditions. I have asked our fire chief to reach out to the public and provide any information, and just would express that we need to exercise some caution when it comes to that. We don't have any of those elements like lightning that would cause a natural wildfire, so everything that we're seeing right now is man-caused, and so I think those are the preventable kind. As far as our Public Works Department, I'll just mention one item there. We are spending a lot of time in the parks, things are starting to green up. Of course, we have the dry conditions there as well. Bringing our irrigation systems up in the various parks after the cold weather can be a challenge, so we're working on that. You see a lot of those irrigation systems working now, and it'll be some time till the weather really warms up to get the green conditions in the parks, but we're making an effort on that now. We're doing a lot of other things in Public Works, but I'll leave my comments to those. I'll tell you a little about my activities here. Today, I did attend a regional outreach event that was organized by Senator Tom Udall. That event was held in Las Vegas. Also in attendance were Jason Phillips and Dan Campbell, and this had to do with federal rural resources. So we went through information that's important to a lot of the northern communities, the smaller communities. We did hear presentations from USDA Rural Development Program. That's a program that we are utilizing now for the filter plant improvements we've used in the past for sewer plant improvements. That's an important program for us. We also heard a presentation from New Mexico Economic Development Department, U.S. Housing and Urban Development, New Mexico Finance Authority, and the New Mexico Delegation Office. So we got a lot of good information there about funding projects. I think the bottom line is there is going to be some additional federal money available for various projects, and we need to look at what might fit our needs specifically. A lot of work in any of these federal programs, but there could be some things that we want to try to fund some local needs with, so we'll talk about that some more as we go. By the way, I did participate in a panel discussion in regard to local projects, and I updated the group on some of the things that we've been working on here in Ratone. Mayor and Commissioner, I did attend the State Aviation Conference that was held in Santa Fe this year. The conference is a presentation of a lot of technical information. There were a lot of federal aviation personnel there, talk about things that they're involved with, and that includes design standards, inspections, facility maintenance operations, data systems, those kind of things. I would tell you that Ratone was nominated for the Airport of the Year. Unfortunately, Taos Minus Airport won, they had a project that cost $25 million, and they won the Airport of the Year, but Ratone was nominated. The good news is that Dusty Longwell won every door prize that they gave away at that thing. I think he had to rent a U-Haul to bring all of the swag home that he won, so Dusty won everything. So it was good that way. Good information, good for the FBI, and good for city staff as well. Myself and Jason Phillips have attended that meeting, and it ties into our plans to continue developing and improving the airport. Lastly, Mayor, I would state that I attended the Northeast Regional Transportation Meeting in Eagleness that was held the day after our last commission meeting, and we talked about regional transportation projects, and particularly, our interest is in looking at funding programs that would receive a recommendation through NERCPO, so we are talking about specifically our Great Blocks project and getting that in mind for potential funding. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Chatterley, you have anything to discuss? Commissioner Jacomo?
You know, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay.
I would then take a motion for item M, closed executive session.
I would move that we are now going to close session.
Pursuant to NMSA 10-5-1H7, threatened or pending litigation?
Thank you, yes.
Have to do it?
The whole thing.
The whole thing. Alrighty, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 10-5-1H7, threatened or pending litigation regarding the Langfield lawsuit. Michael An, could we have a roll call vote on this?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes, we are in closed session. I would grant a five-minute relief break.